Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my immediate right is Commission Member Jeff Cohen. To my immediate left is our Vice Chairman of the Commission JP Benoit. And to the lower table is our Recording Secretary Cynthia Kleist. And I'm Jim Saitter, the Commission Chairperson. As you can see this evening, our Town Planner, Casey Hand, is unable to attend the meeting this evening. As a general information to the public, there are several items on the agenda this evening which will not be heard. The first is a public hearing, which is item number one. It's a special permit revision for North Colony Development Group at 859-861-NORTHCOLONYROAD. The applicant is seeking additional variances from the Town Zoning Board of Approval, and that will be heard next month. Also, item number two, which is a re-subdivision for a third lot for Adams Landing Property Development at 7090 SOUTHERN PIKE ROAD. That application was withdrawn by the applicant. And the final item is Old Business, which is item number four. It's a site plan, temporary tent, patio and workshop for Paradise Hills, 15 Windswept Hill Road. That application has also been withdrawn by the applicant. Which brings us to the third item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit for existing offices to residential apartments, parking reduction, new restaurant/ café for Jay Hall at 50 SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET and 361 CENTER STREET. It's application number 4018. If the applicant and his representative would come forward to begin preparing for their presentation. And Mr. Benoit, if you would please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, legal notice, application 401-18, special permit residential use on upper stories, parking reductions in a CA6 zone, for John Hall to permit conversion of an existing office building, 50 SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET, into 22 one-bedroom apartments and construction of a restaurant/café building, 361 CENTER STREET, with reductions in the total parking requirements on a single property known collectively as 50 SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET and 361 CENTER STREET. We have correspondence from the Chief Engineer, Ed Rizzo, received December 15, 2017. We have a, I'm sorry, and that is an interdepartmental referral, notice of proposed development. We have a planning and zoning interdepartmental referral from the Fire Marshal, received December 15, 2015. We have a memo from Jeffrey Gordon to Casey Costello, Town Planner, dated December 18, 2017. We have a memo from Eric Krueger, Senior Engineer, to Casey Hand, Waddingford Town Planner, received December 22, 2017. We have a memo from Casey Hand to John Hall, dated December 29, 2017. We have a memo from Jeff Gordon to Casey Hand, dated January 2, 2018. We have a, let's say, a proposed site development plan, and it is revised January 2, 2018. We have a memo from the Department of Engineering to the Planning and Zoning Commission, received December 10, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. If the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation. I also would like, before you start, I assume earlier today or later today, you had a conversation with our Town Planner, Mrs. Hand, concerning some, you know, some issues. She had provided me with some comments. I think there are several issues that we'd like you folks to address. Also, as I mentioned, our Town Planner is not here this evening, so from our standpoint, with respect to this application, I don't anticipate us taking any action on this application this evening, but continuing it to our meeting for February. So with that in mind, if you would please begin your presentation, and then with, once you complete your presentation, then perhaps if you could start to address some of the issues that Mrs. Hand raised before I go to the commission for any further questions.
Very good. Just speak.
Yeah.
My name is Jeffrey Gordon. I'm a president of Co-Despote and Associates. We do business in the town of Orange, representing John Hall. The property, as you're familiar with, is an unusual piece of property. It's L-shaped, that wraps around the post office, fronting on SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET as well as CENTER STREET. The existing office building is set to the rear of SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET. And we had a number of conversations with Economic Development and with Ms. Hand early on as to the desire of the community for more mixed-use development to try to enhance the vibrancy of the downtown area. Being set back from SOUTHEAST MAIN as it is, its use for commercial is rather restricted. So Ms. Hand was able to come up with a type of balancing act that we could do, where we would add a commercial building to the CENTER STREET frontage to do something to help with the streetscape. The parcel's 35,000 square feet, and again, it is separated with the L shape. We have the, parking is broken up into two lots, one in front of the office building and one that goes out to CENTER STREET. So we also have the sewer line for the existing building, which goes out also to CENTER STREET, and we would want to maintain that. And that also raises a couple of other issues that I'll get to in a moment with the comments from the Engineering Department. We also are looking at the parking reduction. We also know that there is some transitioning going on with the regulations right now on a number of fronts, but we're trying to work with fully conforming to the regulation with buying back spaces and whatnot, as the regulations stand today. And we would want the option to have that revisited if the regulations change in the future. One of the things we're looking at is to enhance the streetscape on SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET, is to eliminate a number of parking spaces, to create a sitting area that might require an easement. Also, we are demonstrating an area for connecting cross-easements for future into connectivity with the post office property and the bank property to the side of us. We've shown connections where we can. Other areas, the topography doesn't allow for it at the time. And we would put something on the land records that these things can be established if other development takes place on the adjoining properties that you would so encourage them to do, as you're encouraging everybody to do in the area. And a number of communities do that. It just eliminates the amount of traffic that just jumps out onto the road and jumps back onto a parking lot next door. It's a very sensible thing, and we certainly agree with that. There are no plans to do anything with the stormwater management, because if anything, we're going to be reducing the amount of impervious area on the property. The drainage is all in place. The area that is of probably, we're just adding some landscaping, some trees, some shrubs, things of that nature as well. We're restriping the parking lot to conform with current regulations for accessibility, and we're doing that. I have lighting plan that, I guess it doesn't fully conform to your regulation, because I have a slight bit of spillage onto the post office lot. Usually, we find that desirable, but if it doesn't, if you don't have any wiggle room in your regulations, I have an alternate plan that I got at 5 o'clock today and wasn't able to print out from the vendor. The problem with that is, in order to comply with your regulation, it doesn't meet the IES, the Illumination Engineers Society standard. It becomes a little bit less than that, but that's, we could live with that, I mean, in the area, downtown area. We've added basically everything that was on the December 29 memo that we could, and that should be reflected in the revised plans that you have. Dumpster being labeled, finished-floor elevations are on the plans. I think the only thing that I really didn't understand was the requirement to put silt fencing on the west side of the CENTER STREET portion of the property, or to put an erosion control pad. When a property is all paved, we usually don't rip it up to put stone down. It's stable the way it is, and the other side, there's no disruption, so there's really no need for silt fence there. We did add the silt sacks, as was requested. We relabeled some of the proposed trees. We're leaving the existing trees. We're providing a dumpster pad with multiple dumpsters and fully enclosed. And we're also going to take the electric service and make that an underground service as well. Just for your record, I didn't think, I didn't think four would be enough, but I guess it is.
Do you have an extra one? No, if you, would, if you please give us to our Recording Secretary, so she could keep it for the record. Thank you.
This is a computer-generated nightscape of what the lighting actually would be like on the site. It's accurate to a certain degree, because it doesn't take into effect the landscaping that would be in there. It doesn't take into account the fact that there's a retaining wall where the parking lot is, which makes it slightly elevated, but it gives you really pretty good flavor as to what the lighting would be like and the lack of spillage, generally speaking. But I think you can see along the long leg of the property, you can see a slight amount of spillage into the parking spaces of the post office. And again, if, if your regulations allow your wiggle room to allow a certain amount of spillage in commercial areas, it's a good thing. If not, then we would basically use different fixtures there, similar to the ones on the double-loaded parking lot in front of the office building, which would lower the amount of lighting and darken the area that goes across the property line. But that, we could work either way.
Okay.
The other significant issue is regarding the sewer connection. The existing sewer line picks up the garden level, walkout level of the office building and runs out to CENTER STREET, and it goes through that long parking lot. So there was a request for some assurance that the property would not be divided into two separate properties. We would attest that that is our plan. I don't have a crystal ball to know what might happen. Who knows if the post office might become available at some time, properties merge, things change around, but we have no plan for that to be subdivided. And obviously, if anything happened, it would have to come back before this body, and you would have to make sure you had easements and other things. But to take the sewers and reroute it out to SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET would require a pump system. I don't think anybody wants a pump when we have gravity. The other question, and I had a nice conversation with Mr. Krueger, is regarding the proposed building, which Mr. Gru will get into more detail. In order to get a reasonable-sized building for the café bistro, whatever that use is going to be, we wind up having a drive-through tunnel, and the sewer line goes through that. So at first glance, it was a request that we don't go into the building, but we can't do a building there. Sewers go underneath bridges, sewers go underneath townhouses, you have a lateral. So we talked about it at length, and what we're coming up with is a ability to have an inspection manhole just inside the property line. And then when we have our grease trap structure, we would have a line that runs there. So we would actually have two lines going under that building, so we have a spare, so to speak. If there was ever a failure, we have an alternate already run that would allow us to switch over if that became an issue. So again, the parking conforms, the landscaping, I mean, I don't have to go in great length on that, the lighting issues we have. I think the other areas that are really going to be of greatest interest is the new building, and how does that, when does that happen? How does it happen? And the other question we have is going back on to the, to the SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET piece. I have shown three parking spaces out at this time for landscaping, or it could be out for cross-easements. I did what I did in order to maintain a catch basin that's existing there. I didn't want to have to take out and have to reset everything and rework.
Just for the benefit of the public and people maybe watching on television, could please go to your plans and just, if you would point out to those areas that you're talking about concerning, you know, the, yeah, there should be a button to turn that on. And as far as, you know, taking out some of the parking spaces on MAIN STREET and what's being, being proposed.
Okay, so what I have here, these are the parking spaces that we're talking about taking out along SOUTHEAST MAIN STREET. And if we take a look on the site plan sheet, SP2, I'm highlighting one parking spot out here with a bench relocating some shrubs, and then taking two parking spaces out on the south side of the driveway. And then I would have a couple of benches with a paved area and landscaping that wraps around that. Now, we're determining that somewhere along here on both sides, we would have a opportunity for a cross easement. Now, I think Casey's comment was that she liked 24 feet. I don't know if we want 24 feet, or if you would want 24 feet. There are some grade differences in some of these areas. I did allocate for a connection from the post office property to the parking lot here, right at the elbow, inside elbow of the property. And the rationale for that is, this is the area where my topography is actually closest, where I can match up. Can't quite do that over here. And then what we have is, we have a post and rail fence along here. And what we've done is, we've just designated that anywhere along there, as the future would dictate, we could make some sort of a connection there. But again, you know, that depends on how parking works out. Two handicap parking spots here, two handicap parking spots over there. Here is our proposed new building. We have a ground footprint, but we have the building going full width of the property overhead there. Dumpster areas in the corner. We actually found a carting service that has the smaller trucks that can get underneath our thing, and they can handle all that. We've worked with them on other projects where we have tight areas. And then we have a transformer pad that's existing over yonder. Electric service comes in overhead from a utility pole here. We're showing that going underground as well. Pretty much the most significant things that take, take place here, again, on the landscaping plan. Between the light poles, I got some, I got some shade trees, some honey locust trees, maintaining some of the trees that exist along the post office property, adding an island with a tree on this part of the post office, a common line, and again, just adding some shrubs. In the area between our lot and the post office, there is a full bed of shrubs on the other side away from the post office.
Correct me if I'm wrong, with respect to the, the parking spaces and the three spaces that you're planning on eliminating, that under our current zoning regulations, you'd be one space short if you had the three, if you eliminated three spaces. If you, I think, as you know, and I'm sure Mrs. Hand mentioned to you, we're looking at creating some downtown regulations that would reduce the parking requirement. So right now, I believe that what you're showing as far as reducing three spaces, you could only reduce two to still meet your, to meet your parking needs under our current, under our current zoning.
I think I'm under the impression that we could actually pay for another space that we're not having.
Again, I was talking with Mrs. Hand today, and she mentioned by all of the, I guess, the various methods that you can use. And as far as paying, I think it's, I wish she were here, because she'd be able to say it distinctly, but I believe it's 20% of your shortage or something. And I think at the end of the day, because she and I were going through those numbers earlier today, and it came that you'd be, you know, that you'd be one space, you'd be one space short under that calculation.
If that's the case, I mean, we're just, we're trying to thread the needle to make...
No, exactly. I think one of the, I mean, one of the alternatives is that, in fact, if we do approve the downtown, you know, parking, excuse me, downtown, our new downtown zoning, or town center zoning, then that that could become available to you. So where in fact, you could certainly reduce three spaces, and I think you could possibly reduce six spaces. But again, that's just something to make you aware right now.
Again, we know that things are in a state of flux, and I had asked her, I said, well, what, what is going to happen? Are we going to wind up coming back before the board, or can it be approved with an alternate A, B, and C that could be handled administratively by staff? And that seems to be where I think she would create...
No, exactly. I think that, I think that's correct. But I just wanted to make you aware, just the other commission members, that as it stands right now, under our existing regulations, with, you know, the various benefits that you're looking to take advantage of to reduce your parking requirement, you could only reduce just those two spaces right now. Again, not to say that going forward, there could be, you know, other options available.
And again, you know, we'll do the maximum that we're allowed to do. We'll follow what direction you give us to do. And, you know, we see this as a very nice joint project. We're trying to work with the downtown or town center plan, because the vibrancy of it is important to our building.
And I think that also can come into play when we're talking about the height in the 10 feet, 6 inches for your, it's called the retail slash restaurant building. Again, I think, as you know, we're talking about increasing, or considering increasing the height of buildings, so that might be also something.
Right. Okay, well, maybe at this time, Mr. Gru could give a walkthrough on the, on the building plans.
Good.
Good evening. My name is Milton Gregory Gru. I'm a licensed architect. My office is on MAIN STREET in Woodbury, and happy to be before you this evening to describe the architectural design for this development.
Mr. Gru, it might be a benefit, perhaps, if you stood on the right side, I think...
Sure.
Not that, yeah. I think it may be better to pick up for the cameras for the public.
Okay. I'll start with the, with the easier building, the existing one, and then we'll move on to the, the commercial component. But the existing building, as we all know, was a medical office building. It is currently vacant, and frankly, my client, Mr. Hall, has purchased the building. There's no market for office space of that, of that type anymore in this area and in a lot of urban centers in the state. So you really did need to find another use for that property. And in discussions with, with Casey and others here in town, it became apparent that it really might lend itself to kind of an interesting, unique, mixed-use development. The building itself lends itself very easily to conversion to residential apartments. It's, it's structured with masonry bearing walls on all sides, and down the, the center corridor, spine that goes down through the middle of the building. There's exit stairwells on both ends. There's an elevator in the middle. We have three, three stories there with solid precast concrete floors. The building has really good bones. It just looks very dated and is just out of keeping with current, current market trends. So as far as looking at the floor plan of the building itself, it became very easy, even with the existing spacing windows, that on the ground level at SOUTHEAST MAIN and the second floor, on each floor, we could get eight, eight nice apartments, all one-bedroom apartments, that range roughly in size, that's, you know, in the mid-600s to, I think it tops out one, it's about 755 square feet. But there's an even number of windows down the sides of the building, so that we would have a nice large window in a living room, and then a large window in a bedroom, and like that, just keep repeating all the way down. So it's, it's very easy to fit this out that way. And then the lower level, which we had received last year, a variance from the ZBA to allow residential use on the bottom, the first floor of this building, essentially, we show six units there. And that's simply a matter of the grading. If you look at the building, you'll see that there's windows that go down about two-thirds of the way, and then the grade is such that it's coming up towards SOUTHEAST MAIN, that the front part is buried fully underground, so it did make sense to cut that out and try to jam in more apartments there. So there would be six on that level. As I said, 16 on the upper, so that's a total of 22 dwellings. And that lower level in the front, that's fully below grade, is, is great, because it gives us space for tenants to have storage bins. And we're going to be bringing in a fire sprinkler system, so we'll have space to accommodate that as well. So then the challenge was, well, what do we do with the, with the exterior of the building? Because these are going to be market rate apartments. We want to attract young professionals, empty nesters, and people such as that that are in the market for a nice apartment in the center of town and a walkable town center. And they want something that, that looks like it's current today. So as you see here on the elevation sheet, A201, I, I put up a couple of photographs of what the building looks like now. It's right across the street. We're all so familiar with it. But as you, as you know, it has this mansard around the upper level that's basically clad in vinyl siding, has aluminum sliding windows in the building, and then the bottom is clad in between the windows with brick veneer. And then below the windows, there's stucco, like drive-in, exterior insulation and finish system. And so what we're looking to do is basically strip the mansard off of the building, and then re-clad that upper portion with two different kinds of siding. One, in this darker earth tone shade here, would be what's known as Hardy, James Hardy siding, which is a composite cement, composite recycled materials, like, sort of looks like a clapboard siding. And then have projecting out over the windows, aluminum panel siding. It's called aluminum composite siding. And, and that would be in a slightly different color to offer a little contrast and accent. And then along, along the roof line, we would step it to give a little interest, and have the top metal trim at the, at the roof line be a metal coping that would, we'd like to have a green color. to have a green color there for a little contrast and accent. At the doorway right now, the door has no weather protection over it, and so we're looking to put a curved roof canopy that would extend about 10 feet out from the doorway, and have angled steel tube columns that would hold it up, and those would be painted in the same green color as the accent running around the top of the building. And so we would be able to do that on all sides, so that would give us some nice shadow lines. We would also replace all of the windows, they're a great size, they're all about four by four, all the same size, and it's, it's really perfect for a lot of daylight in the Also, part of our strategy here as well is to use materials that we would then also use to complement with the, the commercial portion on Center Street. So that part, of course, was the more challenging one, because as, as you saw from the site plan, what do we do? We only have, the frontage there at Center Street, I think it's only about 53 feet wide, and it's a single-loaded parking lot now, so I need 24 feet for in and out for the cars, and I've just got just about that, or a little better than that left. And, you know, what can you do that's viable in a downtown with 25-plus feet of frontage on the ground floor? So even though we don't have an operator yet or a tenant yet, Mr. Hall's idea for this building is that it's really more suitable, not so much for retail or some other commercial use, but that it would really suit itself more to a restaurant. So that on that, on that lower level, we would actually have a, a nice entryway into the building, have the kitchen facilities there, takeout space, hostess space, but that, then we could have the second floor extend right across the full width of the property, and have that be the primary dining space, and then even on top of that, a third floor with a smaller dining space and a roof deck for outside dining. So, so that's what we came up with. So on sheet A102, we have the three floor plans, so that's why the first floor plan looks so small, because essentially, it's, it's only half of the building at that, at that level. The other half is the driveway in and out, and then we have, we're taking up, of course, a large part of this footprint at this level with exit stairs, which we must have, front and rear of the building, and an elevator. So we really just have enough for what could be the kitchen there, and a nice entryway, and, and perhaps takeout space depending on the cuisine and the type of restaurant that goes in there. The second floor then goes to the full width, so we have zero setbacks along the post office side here, and over here facing Gallagher Travel. And so this would be the dining level, we would have our toilets here and, and dining space, and then we go up to a third level, we would go back to about the same footprint as we had on the ground floor with perhaps a bar and dining here, and then have the balance be an outside roof terrace. And from here, you would have really nice views in the evening, especially looking out over the post office in this open area down toward the corner of Main and Center Street. So it really could be a very pleasant space to be in the evening. So, so this requires, to get a decent amount of space, about 5,000 square feet for a restaurant use, we really need a three-story building here. And so what we show on the elevation sheet, on sheet A202, on the front elevation, is you see reserved, taken out and shaded in here, the area for the driveway, and we add another three feet to the 24 feet to allow for pedestrians walking back and forth from the street side to the parking side. And then taking the stairwell, that would be in the front, and, and lighting that up with basically full glass, aluminum-framed glass wall there, and has some nice striking lighting, a nice stairwell that would really draw people's attention to the building. This spine here would be the entryway, there would be an awning built out over the, the front door, and then this band of windows here is the dining room, and then you see above it, a cable railing and a pergola to be over the front of the dining area looking out over the street. Now, when I met with Casey to go over this design, we talked about the building height, and, and I am showing it right now as complying with the 30 feet, but I know, and, and she said in all likelihood, you would be increasing the allowable height in this zone, and I'm all for that, because right now, I have basically 10 feet floor to floor. Three floors gets me 30 feet. I can, I was showing 10 and a half feet for that driveway until the fire marshal indicated he would rather have, in his memo, 10 foot eight, or 11 preferably. We can do it. It makes the structural design very challenging and rather expensive to have such a shallow floor system that has to span across that opening. So, you know, as, as soon as we hear that the height has been increased from the building, that's when, for, for this zone, that's when we'll start doing the construction joints for this building, because it won't make sense to do it otherwise if we know that this is coming. And this building would look much better if it were about 36 feet high, it really would. Then I'd be able to have 12 feet floor to floor, have some nice generous ceiling heights inside the dining spaces, it just, just makes sense. But that notwithstanding, basically what we're looking to do here is use as, this darker earth tone shade would be the same material that we used over the overhangs of the windows on the apartment building, so this would be an aluminum composite panel. And the reason I selected this type of material here, number one, because the predominant material here is, is the glass and openings with the roof deck and the drive-through. So masonry, because it's so thin and we're spanning large areas, masonry makes no sense on this facade, something such as brick or block, or concrete for that matter. And, and I also need something that has very good fire-rated properties, for the reason that on the two sides, the side facing the post office, this side, the right elevation, and the left elevation that faces Gallagher Travel, those are built on the property line. So the building code requires that those walls be rated for two-hour fire resistance. So, and you're not allowed to have openings, so I can't have windows, I can't have doors on those, when you have a wall on a property line. So I have to use a panel, a material that meets fire resistance tests, and these particular aluminum panels do that, and allow me, in a rather thin design of steel studs and drywall on the inside and insulation, and then fire retardant sheathing, and these panels on the outside to get that two-hour fire-resistant construction in a much more flexible way, especially seeing as how the building is so narrow as it is, I need every inch I can get inside the building. Otherwise, I'd have to use something like concrete block, which would be like 10 or 12 inches thick, and then build walls on the inside of that, and it would just be too prohibitive, especially when I have some large spans to take care of, for instance, across the driveway opening and going along the post office side, I would like to punch that by leaving those openings there and just have the columns come down along the driveway, and then have a solid portion where perhaps windows might have been if it wasn't on the property line, and have that be a lighter shade of the same panel, distinguish it and keep up the rhythm. And then as you see, we have on the roof side two pergolas, and perhaps these columns extending up through and then catching the cable rail that'll be going along the edge of the, of the deck. In the same light, on the left side, we would still be having the same variation, as you can see with the way the lines are drawn for the recessed, for the, excuse me, the change in color between the panels, but that's about all I can really do, because I'm building on the property line. And so the presumption here is here, you know, may not happen in, in our lifetime, but as this zone changes and as more uses and activity comes to the downtown area, theoretically, if the postal service ever goes away, that's going to be a white elephant there. If someone's going to really get the highest and best use out of that property, that building's going away, and presumably, they could build right up against the property line as well. So I can't put anything that's too dear here, because it'll, it could get lost. And the same goes for the Gallagher site. Yes, there's a Victorian house there right now, but presumably, we can't see into the future, but the idea is the, the zone will allow for zero setbacks there. Someone could redevelop that property and put a building right up against this wall, and no one will ever see this wall again. And so that's, that's one of the primary reasons why you can't have windows on a, on a property line. The rear elevation is very similar to the front elevation, except for good reason, I don't put his, I don't put all that glass in the stairwell. There, it doesn't make sense, I'm just looking back at the apartment building, it's the back of the building. I do have the windows in the dining room, of course, and we have the openings here on the roof deck for that, for that use, but we really don't need to do much more than that. So overall, that's, that's the architectural design that we've come up with. Now, as I say, we don't, we don't have a user yet, we don't have a tenant yet, so, you know, we don't know what kind of cuisine is going to go in here, I can't tell you, you know, how big the kitchen will be, we can't get into that level of detail at this point. Basically, we're designing a shell that Mr. Hall can now market and find either a local popular restaurant that wants to make a move, or a new operator that wants to come into town. However, however it happens, that's really going to be up to he and his commercial real estate marketers to, to come up with a user that we can then accommodate with real fit-up of the interior of the building. What I'd like to do is just go over some of the comments that were given that relate to the building design. Let's see. Let me put this down for you. Okay, starting with Casey's letter from December 29th, addressed to Mr. Hall. I'm just going to skip through the ones that have to do with the, the architectural design, because I believe Jeff Gordon has covered the other ones, but number four, having to do with the, the color and the materials on the building, as you can see, we are suggesting what, what colors we would use here, and she said it might be helpful to go through the incentive housing zone design standards to at least see how it compares to that. And seeing as how she wrote this after I had designed the buildings, I can tell you that I didn't use this as my guide, but I was remarkably surprised how closely we follow it. So this is section 4.23 of the zoning regulations, and you get down to section I, which are the building design standards. And it does make the point there in paragraph one, that one may be setting the stage for future development, and it appears we're actually doing that in the town center here, where we may be setting the stage for what will come in the future. And so it says, "To the greatest extent practicable to, to meet the maximum goals of the, of the zone, the maximum height, minimum setbacks, greatest density." So I, I think even talking about how tight we are in the parking, we're, we're doing that, we're getting it as close as we possibly can, we're building as, as big a commercial building as we possibly can on Center Street, going to the maximum of the height, going to zero setbacks on the, on the sidewalk and the two sides, and, and really taking the existing office building and, and building it out to the maximum we possibly could with, with apartments. Paragraph number two talks about building to the edge of the sidewalk, which is what we're doing here with the commercial building. Under the facades, in paragraph three, here's where it, it gets a little interesting, because logically, in this zone, they talk about starting to break up the facades of buildings where you have facades on the street that are more than 60 feet in length. Well, as I said, we're about 53 feet in, in length on the street, but nonetheless, we still have pretty much followed the guidelines that are here in, in that it says to be breaking up the facade into smaller elements, which we've done, to maintain the pedestrian scale, which this building truly does, to have recesses. Well, it wasn't deliberate, but I've got a huge recess on the street level, and we certainly have broken up the roof lines with the roof deck and the pergola along the top. It says that there should be, on the street level, display windows, well, we've certainly to the maximum we could there have provided glass. Entry door with awning, we're doing that in both buildings. Item C, to change color, material, texture, projection, recesses, window, balcony, trellis, or similar architectural features, well, we're doing that, we have a pergola, we have punched openings, we have changes in color and texture between the glass and the aluminum, oh, and as I pointed, I may not have pointed out, on the aluminum frames, and again, the metal edge along the roof line, we want to use the same green that we'll use on the residential building, so we tie those two together a little bit. Distinction between the ground-level floor and the upper stories, that's pretty obvious by the lines here. Let's see, on item E, windows and other major architectural features align with those of adjacent buildings. Well, seeing as how we're sort of the first ones doing this, we don't really have anything to align with. It's not possible for me to think about aligning with a Victorian house on one side, and a post office that on the back area is more of a warehouse than anything, so I don't really have a neighbor there to, to align with. Item G, where blank wall surfaces are permitted, wall panels, pilasters, building bays, other architectural elements shall be carried across the blank surface to achieve interesting facades. So again, that's what we're trying to do here with the change of color and creating some rhythm and bays nonetheless on the blank sides. Under item four, materials and colors, it talks about the quality, durability, and permanence, that they're able to retain their appearance over time. So for instance, the, on the apartment building, the Hardy composite siding comes pre-finished from the factory, and that finish has a 15-year warranty on it, and I've used that material now for, for quite a long time, and I can tell you, I have some buildings that have had it for 15 or 20 years now, and they look just about like the day that they were installed.
Would you please just flip back to the, the existing commercial building? There. Thank you.
And then as far as the aluminum composite panels, those come with a painted finish that, that carries a 20-year warranty, and they really, especially earth tone colors, they don't, they don't diminish over time. If we had some bright reds or blues, those things you will see on office buildings and retail buildings, they fade. See those colors for metal roofs and such, they will fade over time. The earth tones tend not to do that, or you really don't even notice that it's happening. And in fact, going down under number four to paragraph G, it says facade colors shall be low reflectance, subtle, neutral, or earth tone colors, and we, we happened to pick these earth tone colors. It does say on H, that building trim and accent areas may feature brighter colors, including primary colors, so that's what we're trying to do with the green accent. Under item I- Under item I, it says the use of vinyl siding, smooth faced concrete block, tilt up concrete panels or prefabricated steel panels as an exterior surface is prohibited. And and I thought that was a little curious about the steel panels, but you know, we wouldn't be proposing that. And I guess because maybe the the reasoning behind that is steel panels often can have a more of an industrial appearance to them. But the the aluminum composite panels that were proposing to use, you see these every day on office buildings, restaurants, high end retail, there's nothing cheap at all about these panels at all. They're rather costly and they're they're of high quality. In number five, under windows and doorways. It says windows shall be inset a minimum of four inches. That's that's fairly standard and that would be no problem for us. They should be taller than they are wide. Well, on the restaurant. At the stairway, that is definitely taller than it is wide. It's here over the entry doorway taller than it's wide. I must confess at the at the restaurant, that's more of a ribbon of window. And so it's wider than it is tall. Not much I can do about that. And on the residential building, those are square. The existing window openings are square. What I don't like is because they're a sliding window, they have a a mullion in the center, which makes them look very rectangular vertically. And so what I'd like to do is get rid of that and replace them just with a with a square window that doesn't have anything in it. And I think that gives a much nicer rhythm to the to the design there. Under the roofs of item six, it says they should complement the principal building. What we have in this case, two principal buildings. And I I think we've we've done that. They both have flat roofs, both buildings. This mansard is just a facade over the upper, the upper floor. So there's not much we can do to change that. And it says we shouldn't be creating a cluttered visual appearance. Well, I think we've tried to have some very clean lines to the appearance of the building so it doesn't look cluttered or like we're throwing all kinds of different features at it just for the sake of throwing some change into the building. And I think that pretty much addresses all that was in the incentive housing zone building requirements. I already talked about building height and that we really would be frankly waiting to do our final design on the building until the zone had a higher height so that it would be easier for us to to do that. In item G from today's memo from Casey, and it was also reflected in item seven of her letter from December 29th. She's talking about what to do as far as certificates of occupancy or the the prop, the sequencing of this project because we have two really discreet parts of the project. We have the residential component and the existing building and then this new commercial building. So I talked this over with with Mr. Hall and sort of to kind of put the cards on the table. Right now, we have a a property that isn't performing at all. And so every day that he owns it is a is a day with some some dollars lost. The conversion of the existing building to apartments, as as I've described to you is relatively easy. And so it would take very little effort for us to do the final construction drawings, obtain a building permit and have this this building converted and, you know, leasing out apartments probably within a year. That being said, so he has the truly speculative part. I don't think he has any qualms at all about completing the apartment building. That will get rented out easily. Of course, the speculation is the commercial building. When is he going to find a restaurant? Who is it going to be? Are they going to be, you know, willing to pay the tab for a new building in downtown Wallingford? So and and financing for the construction of that building. So what makes the most sense, of course, from the development side is to get part of the building up and running so that the bank or lending institution can actually look and say, oh, right, we have income producing property already. You've got serious collateral here already built out. Let's give you the money to get going with the construction of the shell of the commercial building. So as maybe as as great leverage as it might be to say, well, we're going to tie building permit for the commercial building to COs in the residential building. I don't know that you're helping the developer, really encouraging him to be able to do this project immediately. Because otherwise, he's got to keep playing this cat and mouse game of trying to figure out, well, how am I going to do the residential and I can't complete the residential and if anybody move in until I've got building permit for a commercial building that maybe I don't yet have a tenant for. Granted, you know, you do need some kind of leverage. But I I think it might be wiser or more prudent to maybe tie it to a timeframe than an actual benchmark like we're not going to let you move into the residential portion until you're you're building the other portion. I I know you, you know, get final say, of course, on making the decision on how that goes. But from Mr. Hall's perspective, and I think I think it's accurate. He probably could use like 18 months in which to market the building, design the building because frankly, we'd also like to not do the final design of the building until we actually have a user so that we can do it all at the same time, you know, in restaurants. The inside does a lot for what goes on with the outside. If you know anything about how, you know, restaurants are built, things as mundane as grease hoods and grease traps and where the kitchen layout and and the the style of dining, all of that can do a lot to the the design of the building. So it would be better for us to actually have a user in hand that says, yes, on such and such a date, I will take occupancy of this building and I'll start paying Mr. Hall rent. So what I'm saying is it's very likely that we could be occupying and renting and have revenue from the residential building in less time than that. But he needs to get financing, I think, with an income stream that has a CEO. Banks love CEOs. So I would suggest that perhaps you give him a window of 18 months in which to apply for a building permit for the commercial. And and not necessarily tie certificates of occupancy for the apartments to that.
But if we gave him 18 months. So we were assuming now that the commercial building has been converted to an apartment to to the to the apartments.
Right.
So now you have 18 months to either begin the foundation, pull a permit, begin construction. So you have 18 months to do that. What happens if that doesn't occur? What's the recourse to the, you know, to the town? We don't, we can't pull the certificates of occupancy, as you know, so what's our recourse?
Well, I mean, special permits do have a five year limit anyway, right?
Uh, they're 10 years, I believe now.
Or 10 years, okay. So so maybe, I mean, your only recourse, if you really wanted to push it, would be a legal recourse. But at the same time.
We have, but which legal recourse, which would be what?
I'm not the attorney, I'm not.
Yeah, I know, I'm not either, but I don't really think that there would be any, I don't think there'd be any legal recourse where you could demand then that someone construct a building.
Right.
I don't think that the that you could go to court and demand that.
Right.
So I I think what I'm saying is, at least in my mind, I think we certainly have something for a further discussion. I don't think we're going come to any conclusions this evening, but I think the idea of giving a time limit of 18 months or whatever it is in order to can start construction, put the foundation in, pull the, you know, building permits, what have you. That's a good idea, but I just don't believe it offers any recourse to the town if that doesn't happen. That's at least at this point, that's that's my opinion. Again, that's something, you know, I'm sure we can have further discussion on. I I'm looking at the memo that that Mrs. Hand, you know, indicated to you and it talked about, you know, perhaps setting a a limit of having at least you know, 50% of the or not allowing any more than 50% of the apartments to be leased prior to pulling the building permit, starting the foundation, something like that. I understand the, you know, the constraints there are with financing and certainly financial institutions like, as you mentioned, they like to see income streams. When financing a a project. But I think when you, when this gentleman started with his presentation, you know, he he mentioned one of the things that made this project attractive when you were speaking with Mrs. Hand concerning development was the conversion, but then also the, you know, the commercial building. So I think that that's, at least for me, other people may disagree. I think that's, you know, an important component of the, you know, of the project, whether that happens immediately, but at least in my mind, I would like to have a little bit more comfort level that that could occur because, as you know, we could approve this and that building may never get built. So again, I I think that's something for a discussion for, you know, a further time, but.
Sure, sure.
At least, I don't know if you were going to say something, sir.
I mean, the only thing, again, Jeffrey Gordon. A timeline to have a foundation in is one thing. If I have a bakery that has an oven, if I have a pizza place, if I have different, different fit ups take place. I don't know if there's any kind of a performance bonding that can take place for for certain aspects of things. Or a hybrid, a combination of CEOs and and again timelines. So I obviously we have both some research to do on what makes the most sense. And as I told Casey today, we both have to be a little uncomfortable for it to be fair, I guess.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with you. At least speaking for myself, what your, what your folks are proposing, I'm looking at this and looking and saying it's is very attractive, at least in, you know, in my mind. What makes it attractive is the conversion of the the office building into, you know, into residential. As well as then providing the commercial building there. It become, I won't say it becomes less attractive if that commercial bill, excuse me, if the restaurant that you're proposing never gets built. Again, that's, I think there's more discussion that needs to go into that.
If if I may, I can also just point to the fire marshal's comments. And his first sentence there, he he states the obvious, this is in the building code, the residential building requires sprinklers. And then I already mentioned about the the height, he prefers 11 feet for the underneath and that's fine. And and then he says, you know, a detailed building plan will determine if a sprinkler system is required. As as we've designed it right now with the occupant load that it would be capable of carrying, it would need sprinklers. But but that that detail waits until we have a building permit set of documents where we do a final occupant load calculation and it's the trigger is 300 people. If a if a place of assembly like a restaurant can hold 300 people, sprinklers. And I I think those were all the comments that had to do with the design of the buildings. So I guess I'm done.
Good. Thank you. Do you have any other comments before I?
I'm all set.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Commission members with questions for the for the applicant at this time. Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just have a few questions. Overall, I I think this is a really great project. I I think the way you described it will be, you know, a real nice asset to to downtown. But I did just have a couple of minor questions, I think. And the first one I had was you know, the internal parking property connections. It sounds like, you know, you're still working on, you know, connecting the you know, the parking lot, the area together. Do you have any, you know, initial thoughts on that? You know, it to me, it seems like, you know, you were talking two or three, you know, internal connections. And, you know, by doing that, you're going to be you know, taking away a couple of parking spaces. So I, you know, I I know it's a requirement, but I'm thinking, you know, from from my opinion, if you could, you know, if we could allow, you know, a minimum of those connections. You know, it might be bitter off, you know, saving a couple parking places. But I was just wondering if if you had any initial thoughts on, you know, where those connections would be at this point.
Well, I guess our problem is we don't know what our neighbors would do in the future. Where where they might require it or where the wisdom of this commission or the town planner might say that's a perfect spot to have a connection. It may be where we where we decide to put them right now makes no sense to a future developer of the post office property or the bank or whatever. So it's it's kind of hard being the first person in. We don't have somebody who's already planned for it and say, okay, well, we put ours here and it's going to match up and the grades work. So I I think the best we can do is, as Jeff Gordon mentioned, is we could put notes on the plans that say, you know, we can allow for them on these property lines based on what approvals you give in the future for redevelopment of those parcels. And then maybe, you know, because your parking regulations are going to be relaxed as we go forward anyway. For instance, right, we're at one and a half per dwelling right now, and I think you're favoring going to one. Well, that that's going to free up parking spaces that then we would be able to say, okay, we can take these two or three out and put in a connection.
Right now I show three crosshatched areas and an overriding note elsewhere. A lot of times it's almost where you have to put in some sort of a a deed restriction that says that you will make it available if a comparable property adjoining becomes available at such time. Again, we don't know what the future is going to be. We want to be flexible. You want us to be flexible. Part of the reduction in parking, I think, takes into consideration interconnection. So you, you know, a lot of parking that took place. I mean, we probably go back to the days when we used to go shopping with our parents and we'd circle around at a parking lot for 20 minutes looking for that parking spot. And I kind of miss those days to a certain extent, rather than having a sea of parking that never gets used. But the fact is, the extra parking is because people are moving from lot to lot. If if we have interconnections there, then you generally could probably use a few less spaces.
So, yeah, so so Casey's not here, but yeah, that's that's a good answer. It it sounds like you could just, you know, mark it on the plans and it doesn't have to be, you know, created when this is built.
If we if we were to define it on on our maps now and then it turns out it makes no sense for what happens with the post office, let's say. And that developer says, not in your life. That's not where I would want to connect. That'll kill me. And whereas, you know, if we had some flexibility in our plan where we could have moved it.
We've done it on plans where we've said the area is reserved for connection, subject to modification. And sometimes it floats, you know, a little bit. It can be reassigned elsewhere.
Okay. Just a couple of quick things. The the commercial, you know, you mentioned a takeout. And then, you know, the fire marshal says a drive through.
No, it's not a drive through as in pickup food.
Okay.
He's talking about a drive through as I would call.
I didn't think so.
If you want a fancy word for it, port cochere. But basically it's it's a driveway under the building. It's not, there's no pickup from your car of food.
And and I I was a little, little bit confused. The main entrance to the commercial would be on South Main?
No, on the commercial on Center Street.
On Center Street.
Oh, yeah. There's a, there's a door right next to the stair, this, the tall window there for the stair.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify that. And just the last question I had was what what did you mention the potential outside seating area might be?
That's on the roof.
That's on the roof. Yeah. Do you have a square footage for that? I think you mentioned it, but.
As we show it right now, the outside dimensions are twenty-eight feet wide and sixty feet deep, um, whatever, whatever that adds up to.
Fifteen hundred square feet?
Yeah, about fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any other commission members? Just have a, a question concerning the, you know, the front of the property on South Main Street. The, uh, you're, you're planning on taking, you know, three spaces and making that, I think you indicated a seating area or something. What are you proposing? Is that going to be grass, mulch? What do you propose that that's going to look like?
What I'm proposing is to have a, a concrete walkway from the sidewalk to the benches, and then have some plantings around the perimeter of it, uh, which would have a mulch bed.
Okay. And then the, the existing hedges that are right on the sidewalk, those are gonna be taken, I, I would assume or hope that they're gonna be taken out, because, again, I think as you know, cars coming in and out, that's somewhat of an active sidewalk, and with those hedges right there, right now, that, that kinda creates a little bit of a...
Well, what I can relocate, what I can relocate, I'll try to relocate, otherwise I replace back on the backside of the benches to give a little separation between the cars parked and the, and the benches.
And if we did approve a reduction in parking, uh, I take it it could, would be possible perhaps to even provide a little bit more green space, at least on the south side?
Yeah.
Because on the, when on the north side, there's a catch basin or something in one of those parking spaces, which really wouldn't allow for that to occur. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right. I think for the moment that covers my questions. This is a, is a public hearing. If there's members of the public that would like to speak on the application, just please come forward, state your name and, oh, sir, if you could, please stay there, stay comfortable. State your name and address and your comments.
My name is Joe Mira, Chairman of the Economic Development Commission.
Uh, Mr. Murray, if you please turn your microphone on.
Good evening, I'm Joe Mira, Chairman of the Economic Development Commission. Again, we recently had the benefit of a presentation to the commission, and we voted unanimously on the project. We thought it was the right project at the right time, a little bit even overdue for that area. Would like to see some activity, we think it would enhance the community downtown. And the more you talk about it, when you reflect the incentive housing zone, it would be a great working model to show what really could happen downtown, down the bottom of the hill there. So it would benefit the town where it is, and it would benefit the town for future projects down the street. I understand the, the, the challenges with the commercial end of it, the restaurant end of it, and I've heard a few suggestions, and I'm hoping that the commission could be flexible enough to make one of them work, because I'd like to see that building, we would like to see the building up and used and the foot traffic as soon as possible. It's been dormant for too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members from the public? You guys look like a lounge act here.
Good evening, Vincenzo Di Natale, A Tale Lane in Wallingford, and, uh, family has property across the street from Mr. Hall's property. We are excited about his investment that he's made in the property across the street. I've had a chance to look at the plans. Um, it's a wonderful concept, and this investment will benefit the entire, um, CA six zone, especially the restaurants, whether it's from, you know, the Michaels extending all the way down Center Street. There was some conversation about the commercial component, and, you know, personally, my feeling is if it were to wait until some of the pieces came together, um, 'cause it is, sounds sort of complicated, that seems logical, especially since some of the neighboring properties like the post office and Gallagher aren't, at this point in time, ready to make any major changes, whether he waited eighteen months or waited five years, you know, I think the Main Street property is critical, um, that that gets started right away. And then, just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned something about parking. I know we've had lengthy meetings, uh, with parking, and I wasn't clear on whether this out, it seems like there's a lot of parking spaces here, and whether they utilize the new regulation, or they didn't even need to. My understa...
No, they're not, on the, for the parking that they're providing right now, as far, when you say, when you, when you say the new regulation, or what we're considering for our town center?
The regulations that were adopted...
I believe they're using those, those regulations.
Allowed for some options like...
Yeah, they have...
Public parking...
Reduction, I believe there's, uh, twenty, you can have a twenty percent, if, if you're...
For share.
Yeah. There's, they're using, and I won't, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but as far as all of the options that are available to them under our current parking regulations, that they're using those options.
We're, we're using them all. We're using the one for, uh, shared uses, which, between a restaurant, there's very little, I think it's like a ten percent credit or something, uh, between a, a restaurant use and, and apartments, because their peak time is the same, pretty much. We are using the credit toward designating some as, uh, public spaces.
Public spaces.
And, and then, uh, for the, for the ones that were allowed, the fee in lieu of, of spaces as well.
And I guess just for the benefit of, for us here in the audience, if you, uh, it seemed like, the, the other one was maybe like a bike rack or something, but how many public spaces were, uh, being provided? And I think there was, um, a component, there probably, there were two types of public spaces, one that were twenty-four hours, available twenty-four hours a day, or some that were limited use.
I think if these gentlemen would answer that question.
Shared parking credit, uh, let's see, that was four. Parking spaces made available to the general public, um, forty-six less twenty-two for the apartments, twenty-four. Fee in lieu of parking spaces, twelve. Final required, fifty-eight minus the twelve, forty-six spaces provided. Kinda hard to follow, but...
So, so there's twenty-six spaces that were provided to the public, and those are twenty, available twenty-four hours a day, or they, 'cause there was two options in the public parking? And, and you know, and I could follow up with that.
I think that's, yeah.
Okay.
I think that might be, uh, we can get you those answers, Mr. Di Natale.
Yeah, yeah, you see where I'm going, 'cause we, it's been in the conversations in our workshops, if we wanna be clear for you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Other members of the public like to comment on the application? Seeing none, again, as I mentioned, we're going to keep the, the public hearing opening, opened, as we're going to continue this application till, uh, to, uh, next, uh, next month.
Do you want us to leave the plans here, um, or should we take those with us?
No, if you, uh, you could take those with you. We have a, uh, we have a set of, I assume the planning office has a full set of those plans, revised plans. I know we have the, the short version, if you would.
Also, I believe we're, we're still, uh, needing comments from DPW. I don't think we've gotten those yet.
Engineering...
You need, you need comments from the engineering department. I was told that we were going to receive them this evening. Unfortunately, I'll stop there. Uh, we did not, uh, we did not receive them. Uh, so again, I, I think that we've given you, uh, you know, some ideas as far as some of the thoughts of the commission. Again, I, I appreciate some of the comments the, the public made with respect to, you know, "Let's get the residential side up and running, and when the retail happens, it happens." Again, it's, this is just my opinion, there's, you know, gonna be four other people, I assume that'll be voting on this application, uh, next month, so, you know, for my, for my approach, uh, as you stated out, as you stated, rather, when you started your presentation, one of the things that made it very attractive, in your conversations with Casey, was the two components, and I would look for some assurance leverage, something, uh, that, that makes that happen at some point in time. And I think there's certainly a whole host of things could be discussed with respect to that, but, you know, when I'm looking at this project, and I think other commission members feel the same way, I think it, this is something that could be extremely attractive for our, uh, our downtown, uptown, our town center, whatever we wanna call it, and, uh, for this property, certainly something that's, uh, that's long overdue, so. With that, uh, I would entertain a motion to continue this to our, uh, February meeting. And Cynthia, what's the date of that meeting?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Valentine's Day? Who decided that?
You.
Be a lot of unhappy people.
February fourteenth.
All right, I entertain a motion to, uh, to continue this, uh, application to our February fourteenth meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue application four oh one dash eighteen to the February fourteenth, uh, planning and zoning meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, moving on. Uh, our next item is recommended, uh, for road acceptance, and we have just one, uh, item number six with his, which is Royal Oak Circle, which was application one zero five one four. We have some communication from, uh, our town engineer, and indicating acceptance of the, of the road. And anyone have any questions on that? I'd entertain a, uh, motion on the request.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the recommendation for Royal Oak Circle, application one oh five dash one four, for approval.
For road acceptance.
For road acceptance, my...
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And if it's not too late, uh, if we could just, 'cause we did not note just one item for the, uh, the special permit...
Yeah, this is her note, yeah, but they haven't, oh, they haven't, you referenced it.
Okay. Uh, so for special permit, application four oh one dash one eight, we also received notes from Planning and Zoning Department for application four oh one dash one eight dated January tenth, two thousand eighteen, from our town planner, I, Casey Hand.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Menoit. And looking at the other items on our agenda, election of officers, obviously, we do not have, uh, a full, uh, complement of commissioners here. Just going down, uh, for reports of officers and staff, administrative approvals, there was a change of use art studio to tattoo poliper Rodriguez at nine fifty Yale Avenue, unit number seven. Uh, we also have, uh, from the zoning board of appeal, their decisions for December eighteenth, uh, twenty seventeen. I don't know if anyone has any questions on those. And also for the ZBA notice for January sixteenth, twenty eighteen. And on that, again, I'm not sure if anyone has any questions.
Are we still seeing, I mean, we're still seeing the garage sizes still going for variances after we've made that regulatory change?
That's correct. They're still, that's still happening.
You know, I guess the question is, do we, at some point, wanna have another discussion about that? 'Cause did we not restrict, or...
We thought we addressed the issue.
Right, and, and, you know, this is what, we got three here.
Yep, exactly.
And I think we, if I remember correctly, the last one, we had one or, no, two months ago, we had one or two, so maybe we need to think about that at future workshop or something.
Good. There is one item that I did discuss with our town planner, and this is, uh, item number four, it's eighteen dash three, uh, eighteen dash zero zero three, so variance request for North Colony Development Group. Again, I think we can all remember that last month, uh, they were here with their application, and they had received some variances from the ZBA, uh, and then they presented us plans for their development, and those plans did not track to what was approved, uh, by the ZBA, so they, you know, have gone, are now going to go back to the ZBA to have those plans modified. One of the things that they're looking for on the plans is to further reduce their landscaping, uh, from the variance that they initially received. And I indicated to our town planner, Mrs. Hand, that, and I felt that we should, uh, indicate to the, the ZBA, the fact that, you know, they showed that the landscaping, the landscaping reduction that they requested was adequate for them, and now they're going back and looking for a further reduction in landscaping, and, uh, at least in my mind, I didn't think that that would be supported, or should be supported, given their initial request, they indicated that it was, was, was adequate, so. I don't know if anyone has any other comments on that? And it brings us back to our zoning enforcement log, if anyone has any questions on that? If they do, I don't think they're gonna get answered. And finally, uh, just to point out, we had discussed at our last, uh, meeting, uh, for our, uh, town center zoning regulations, we were planning on having a, a workshop on January twenty-second. Uh, and I know at our, at that meeting, Mr. Cohen indicated that he didn't, uh, believe that he was gonna be able to attend, and unfortunately, I had a change in my schedule, I'm gonna be out of state on the week, on, on that week, and will not be able to make the meeting, so I've asked Mrs. Hand to send an email out to all commission members to see if it might be possible to have that workshop for sometime next week, if that may work for people. Uh, you know, if not, then the week after the twenty-second, 'cause I, I, I feel bad about canceling it, or looking to cancel the twenty-second. I like to do this as, you know, as soon as possible, as we've, you know, we have some momentum going on this, and I really would like to bring this to a, you know, kind of to a head.
Any possibility of doing it the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth is a Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, from my standpoint, it's great. Again, there's other commission members...
Right now, that's fine for me.
I, I think if you try to do it next week, you're not given enough time for even...
That's fine.
That, that was my only thing.
Okay, no, that's fine. Uh, again, I'll mention this, uh, that to Mrs. Hand, and ask her to send out the monkey survey, or the survey monkey, or whatever that may be, uh, in order to see if that, the twenty-ninth works for everybody. Okay, that being said, I believe we're at the end of our agenda, so I would, at this point in time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much, you have a good evening.